We all tried that.
No.
We don't have to have the phones off to clear off.
We were wired for about ten minutes today. I don't think the voice still comes.
I want to apologize in advance for Jeff.
You don't have to do that. We did it the first four years.
Let's call us main, no order, please. Source on that remote. Minutes and reports received with file?
None.
Commissioner, committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
We got our ribbon cutting out of Pioneer Terrace after this. Very breakfast tomorrow morning. That's all. Then we'll be in the woods again, right?
Small business Saturday. We're going to come down and count the shots.
I am not shopping until December 24th.
[laughing].
You think I'm joking? I'll put five ago. I'm going to get all that stuff. You're going to get a Bic lighter and a pack of gum prior to Christmas from your family.
Wow.
I'm sure Samuel will have some gifts.
Badasses.
Or he might just run over you in the front.
No, we just left the police stop.
Everybody's wondering what's going on. That's all I got, Sam. You better keep this moving.
I'm waiting to see if Chris has something really, really worthwhile. Nope? Okay. We got a lot on our agenda. This presentation from staff, presentation by Spyglass on communication audit. That is... Martin?
Yes.
Yes.
Hey, I go by Marty, by the way.
Okay.
I was expecting us to talk to you guys here at that middle crowd, so excuse me for not being prepared, I guess. So Debbie was nice enough to meet me here last week. What Spyglass does everybody is we help review... What we do is help save cost of county school districts.
Talk into that. It doesn't amplify it, just record.
Yep.
School districts, county cities, really anyone who's looking to reduce costs. What we look at is communication spending. So anything that the county receives an invoice regarding phone, internet data cell, that whole ball wax. What it is that we do is help make sure that the carrier to the service, in this case Century, CenturyLink, hasn't been, I guess, getting creative with their billing. And as you guys can probably imagine, you know, paying your cell phone bill every month, these companies tend to overcharge people. And so what we do is we look for recovery opportunities. So we're looking for a historical dollar amount we can actually bring back to the county. We look to reduce what you spend on a monthly basis, and then we look to help raise clarity of the cost in there by essentially auditing the bills. Keep in mind, I'm not trying to sell like the county a new shiny phone system, change anything though what you have to pay for. It's more or less just making sure that what we've been paying CenturyLink through the life of this relationship has been fair. And in many cases, you know, with, for example, County of Callaway, Eukena County, Cooper County, and we're saving them over 20 to 25% on just looking at their bills. And so the idea is how it works is we give two months worth of invoices, which I know Debbie already pulled together here last week. We take it off, and I give that to the smart folks that are corporate dollars and actually look at phone bills all day. They come back in about one month's time, present to the county what we actually found, and then you guys will just get to pick and choose whatever you want to move forward on. For the notice, you know, if we come back, let's just say eight recommendations, the county only likes three recommendations. We take the three that you like, we implement that with carriers for you. What I'm getting at is the five that you didn't want to move forward on in this example, there's absolutely no finder's fees for that. So how we get paid is simply on a contingent basis, so there's no upfront cost to this. The return on investment's one year, so what our fee is, is the first year savings ROI, being one year's 12 times where the monthly, or the monthly savings came out to be, and then a 50-50 split of anything retroactive. So it's meant to be a short ROI. You know, what we guarantee is keep in mind the county's not going to be paying any more than you're paying here today or right now. After 12 months, you just will own that annuity for alternative asset. And so it's just a short ROI, and you know, you guys are spending right around $9,000 a month. So expectations here would be saving the county right around $1,800 a month, plus $20,000 a year just by looking at your bills. That's, I mean, that's how much these companies tend to put a bunch of crap on there, quite frankly. I don't know if this...
Just one point. If you bring us eight recommendations, why wouldn't we take all of them? Instead, if you have eight, just do three, whatever.
Well, most people do, but keep in mind, we don't want to be jamming these things down your throat, so we give you the opportunity to pick and choose whatever you want to move forward on.
Well, if I'm going to save money, then jam it in.
Well, let's pretend, you know, there's something that you guys already know about you're working on. We're not going to want to take credit for that, for example, but, you know, most people will implement that, most certainly present, just because, you know, it makes sense. But again, we live up to you, so.
And I invited him here today. There's been other vendors that have approached me about coming and doing this. I did tell him that we would look at his contract, look at some other vendors' contracts, and they would get back with us. That's okay with you.
Yeah. Yeah, we have a quick little one pager. My name is Eric Green. It's very simple. I'll leave that with you here today. Again, I have a lot of references here in Missouri. I'm from St. Francis County. I moved home about two years ago to do this, and we've helped a lot of cities, counties, and school districts in Missouri across country do this, so that's how it is.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks, Mort.
So here I hand this to them.
Thanks, Mort.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for having me.
Presentation on 2017, 2021, one-half cent capital improvement sales tax year recommendation.
Okay, on the screen. Try to go through this. Earlier this year, the Road and Bridge Advisory Committee began meeting to start looking at some dollar breakout for the next sales tax that we did if it passes next year for the years of 2017 and 2021. And we met, I think, the third time last week to finalize everything, and this is what we came up with. The current sales tax that we're in is on the left side of the new one on the right, and I've go through the changes that we, that we made on it, starting with safety and capacity improvements. We had 850,000 in there. A lot of the projects that we do have a safety component in it already, so we don't get to identifying, identifying single projects that are just for safety or capacity purposes, but there might be at the point of another project that we could utilize in this category. So we did drop that down quite a bit, in half actually, from the current sales tax. For example, we used to take the guardrail out of this, out of this bump, but the projects that we do now have the guardrail already included in it as part of the contract. So for that reason, we did some changes around this money to utilize it on other categories. The upgrade roads to pave went from 3 million to 2.5 million, and that's just based on the two roads that currently need traffic in the corner, and that's what the current cost is, is Mount Hope and Waterford Road. It's a continuation of Waterford Road where it's paved at the second end down in Tormal River and take it over to connect it to Mount Hope Road and then also Leshrill. I'll save the cooperative projects for last. We'll do the major drill fairs. We bumped that number up. What we found, this current sales tax, when we did this, instead we added, it cost us quite a bit more than what we had originally planned back when we pledged it forward in 2010 and 2011. So this, in this category, we have a continuation of that project to the St. Martin's city limits, and there's also some additional funding in there to do potential projects like Curtain Bettering, Rainbow Drive on that end of town, as well as possible support to the Volition Drive area, Liberty Road area, and then any other kind of major drill fair or higher volume road, some of those areas. And so that's where we're at on that, the cooperative projects with the villages. What we did on this is currently there's seven small communities, they're villages in the county, and each of those we give them $100,000 in sales tax to do typically overlays, maybe some other small repair, street repair type work, curtain gutter pavement replacement and things like that. So in this sales tax, the future sales tax, assuming it passes, we have that same amount going each community plus an additional 800,000 to use for cooperative projects in which the small communities would discuss with us and submit a request for a cooperation on a project. Things like, for example, in St. Martins, the Business 50, part of the Business 50 project to Route E would include some end of the city, but it's St. Martin's. So that'd be an example of some funding we'd use in this category, as well as down in Wartville, possibly cooperative, cooperative project with MoDOT to do the intersection around Route E and the W, and then any other kind of, you know, more capacity type projects in the communities. The main four that, what we see in this, in this funding category, towns, St. Martins, Wartville, and Russellville tend to use more than that $100,000 and have to contribute their own funds, and then there's still more needs in those communities. It's an opportunity for those communities to be able to have a money, or have a project in which they put up some money and then we match or do a little bit more than the match. So that, that can be discussed in more detail against later if we get to it. Here's, here's a big one here, the resurfacing, and we added in this category concrete street replacement. In the current sales tax, we bumped it from, I believe it was 4.5 million to 5 million, and we want to take that to 6 million, $250,000, another $250,000 a year. We're really good at getting into the preventive maintenance, trying to do more of that to keep our roads in good condition. And then also with the concrete streets, we're having a lot of problems with those deteriorating, very vicious test of that, and we need to start going in and replacing some of these concrete panels in these streets, and we just don't have the money in the manpower to be able to do a whole lot of that in-house. And so we're looking to do some contracted projects on that. And then equipment replacement, we're keeping that the same, 1 million, 450,000, $50,000 in that. And the bridge, culvert, low water crossing, stormwater projects, this is a pretty broad category. We want to bump that up to 3.4 million, probably 2 million. And this is doing some low water crossing replacements primarily, maybe some low water bridges. We've got several identified in the county that could do the replacement, possibly a box culvert, different options on that. And stormwater improvements, which is a big category, we've done a lot in this current sales tax, and we need to keep doing more. There's a lot of need for the older subdivisions, but we let some pipes deteriorate to the point that they need to be replaced. The issue with that is that the streets are also falling apart too, and so to do it right, we need to go in and do all the stormwater work either before or at the same time we're doing the street replacement work. And then also, there's a bridge needs to be removed, the north part of the county, North Montalto Creek Road, it's an old rust bridge that we would take down and not replace it because there's a weigh-in other than that. So that's, that's where we're at in contingency, is bump that up to 1 million dollars. And then the county facility equipment improvements, which would be the county commission's decision on that, if that matches to 85, 15% split for a grand total of 31 million dollars, up from 26 million. I talked with Kristen about that. She was comfortable with that projection, and it's based on using a... Looking at, kind of projecting what the current sales tax is going to bring in, and then using about a 2% per year growth. And then I said I'd get to the cooperative projects with the City of Jefferson. That, that amount's staying the same at 5.5 million, and we've, we've discussed with city staff and different projects that were calling to that. There is basically some categories. The actual projects that would be done would still be up for discussion with the city council, the mayor, the county commission, but the categories are reduced traffic congestion, travel times, improved roadway safety, maintenance of the current existing infrastructure, support of emergency economic, commercial development projects for a total of 11 million dollars, and our county fortunately have that 5.5. So I went through that pretty quick. Like I said, this was discussed with the Road and Bridge Advisory Committee over the course of last year, and actually a little bit the previous year, 2014, the times are talking about it. And, you know, we at Public Works think it's a pretty good breakout. We're trying to emphasize more the preventive maintenance and improving the existing system that we have with the extra money for the resurfacing and street replacement and a lot of stormwater improvement projects, which we've been pretty successful at the last few years doing. So, any questions?
I like the projects in cooperation with the villages. I think that's, that's really good.
We've, I'd say, talked mostly with St. Martins about some needs they have out in their community, and they have Business 50, keeps on going further west, and it's in the same condition of what our Business 50 was, so we replaced it. It needs some work, and to do an overlay on that would use up more than their $100,000 if we get it five years. So that's just kind of where, where they're at, and they don't have a whole lot of money to do much as well, so bumping that number up does give them an opportunity to do more. All right, you got to decide who gets what.
Well...
Throw you under the bus right here. Have you thought about that?
Be the kind of...
Or you got to split it up?
We got to look at it, know the factors, you know, traffic, you know, issues, you know, how many cars a day use it? Is it a local road or is it a major, major road? You know, there's a number of different parameters we can come in and work together. You know, St. Martins has Business 50, Wartville has Route N, W, and, you know, and it, whether or not they partner up, you know, whether they purchase them, you know, like to use them, foster the skin in the game, so.
Yeah, and if they want to pursue a grant through MoDOT or want to be in some areas like that, they can do that and identify some loans from us in that grant, and that might... When, when they look at those grants, they would like to see cooperation between the different communities and cities and counties, so that might make it a little easier to get the grant loans.
Like Jeff, also, like Eric said, the main criteria or decision comes down to you all, and we just make recommendations, so, you know.
Here's my issue with it is that we're going to have everybody coming to us wanting more, including Jefferson City. I don't mind doing these projects, but each time these small towns think about annexing more, and I'll use Wartville, and I live there, and that's one of the examples, they take over, you know, a certain subdivision, those roads weren't built to our specs before they got it, and now they're going to come to us and want us to fix them. I don't know, I just, I don't have a problem with trying to throw a little more money helping the small towns out, but that's also why they incorporate or they build just and stuff, just so they don't have to deal with the other government oversight, so I might find leaving it in there and working on it. What else? Did the bridge, that come up to the, what we raised up to? Yeah, where it was. You raised it up a million point four. We're going to have that much more in projects that need to be done?
Well, it's not bridges, that...
That's not water crossings?
No, it's stormwaters in that too, Jeff. That's where, you know, if you look at the projects, Rainbow that we did this on...
Yeah.
Our...
Look where they're subdivision, that was over $30.
You know, when you get into these older subdivisions, it's down hidden, elephant in the room.
Well, we're running into that something terribly, right?
Well, not, not only us, city, well, MoDOT has mine, but has it, you know, it's, that's something that we need to address. It's outside out of mind, but we're starting to give them a report to holes in people's yards and stuff, or the bike or stuff, or rust it out, so.
This is the, how we came up with that amount. So 3.4. Five different low water crossings that we look at and replace it, and then three stormwater projects. And Westview, that's 750,000 on that. I could, we could probably spend upwards of 10 million there. I mean, it's... Once Jefferson annexed it.
I'll try it often.
We can give them animal control too. You know, one thing to point out, this is the recommendation to the county commission. You can take with it and do with it what you want.
This is what made it happen, what made it come up.
Yeah, but when they see the numbers split out like that, perception is reality, and it's hard to fluff things around, so just want to make sure we got them where we need them. I was just asking about the 3.4, because that was a big jump on the stormwater and the bridge and the wood, obviously.
We spent more than 2 million. We was...
We can.
Same guy, just...
And that was, we, we had more time to come in, just due to the projection was low and the current sales tax on the road, so we could have utilized some extra miles. Yeah, and gravel roads are, we don't have many of them to have the traffic volume to justify doing a whole lot with them either, so not a whole lot on that list anymore. Anyway, this is just the recommendation to the county commission. We wanted to get this before you, before the end of the year, so you can start planning this out for the... So thanks for the lectures, thank you.
I'm good with it. That's been a good chat. Kind, kind of look in your crystal ball and see what we're going to be.
I would like everybody else, you know, the infrastructure, we got to take care of what we've got, you know, still be able to survive economic development if something does come up, so.
Yeah.
Think on a little better, if you want to, but...
There's some wording and stuff I'd like to look at and discuss. I mean, I don't want to have to do it all today, but I don't, I don't know if this is going to be blowed it on. Yeah, I'd just say go ahead and keep moving with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, one thing I think we need to do, or, you know, at least from our part, is we'd like to thank the committee. They spend quite a bit of time in meetings looking at this. We had a drive here, a lot of the county, just looking at roads and stuff. We've been working on this for over a year, like Eric said, so kudos to the committee and their help, so.
Yeah.
At some point, we got to approve this or something so that we can raise a full thank you, print literature and stuff, right?
We don't have literature and stuff, so I just didn't want to get deep into it today.
That's fine.
Because we got a full agenda, but if we want to have a separate meeting, because we can talk probably for hours about this.
I'd be happy to come up next week or week after. Just wondering if you need us to, we'll be glad to come up and sit down with you.
Next week or next week.
Yeah, but I'm not sure where we're at exactly on the villages and small township one either, so.
Some of the, some of the thought process there too, is that, you know, about helping some of these villages, and they're a big part of the county too, that they may disincorporate and we have another new team, and we can get another water system, we can get another sewer system, you know, so.
We never had to take over the water system.
But we would have to take over the roads, so they would be ours regardless of whether... So, anyway, I just, I just think that we need to help them as well, and I, I agree with what you're saying, you know, they're trying to grow and expand and stuff too.
Well, they are growing, so...
Because they annex certain areas, but they don't check the roads before they annex it. Kind of like we're doing out there on the West End.
Yeah, just do some more...
Better not take it over. Do some NIDs, Wartville NID.
Yeah.
They actually, I think they have property technical on the ballot for next year, so they are trying to do something about it. What, Jeff said he disincorporates?
I don't want it.
I'm a retard.
Didn't somebody say, hey, y'all should join forces? Have one big fellow.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You all want to just say your...
Y'all want to take over animal control too, isn't it?
Yeah, I'd, I'd bring it come around.
What's that? Yes. Okay.
Chris?
Yes.
You're up.
You're up. At about 10 minutes, we would appreciate it. We have a very full agenda.
This is my key.
Hold on a second. What do you want to be?
What you got here?
Well, this is the master plan, basically. This is our development we're proposing. It used to be the green track. It's the opposite of the hospital in 179. And we are in the process of, on the backside of... We're proposing the front development, which is currently in a study of Jefferson County, and then the other three tracks all the way down to, I guess they call that Wildwood Drive, proposed Wildwood Drive. I believe you all engineered and bought all that right away already, but we're looking to annex the balance of that ground and dedicate all the right of way to the city as well as county to get that roadway mission drive built. And we will be, we've got a current TDD on the front section, the front 80 acres. We would be extending the TDD all the way down to Wildwood Extension, donating all that right of way, and we're asking the county and the city to participate in funding the TDD at the front portion in an amount of $800,000 a piece, and continue the development of the Wildwood Drive in which, after we have the front commercial piece developed and the front section of Mission Drive built, the TDD will fund and pay for that road all the way down to that intersection. And that's what we'd like the commission to consider in work with the city at this point to, we're, we're in the process of working a development agreement with the city right now, and I think it's a win-win for the city as well as the county. So that's what we'd like to propose and show you all what we're doing and ask for your help. We've got about 260,000 square feet of retail going in to that front piece, as well as restaurants and some office buildings and some other development. And we've got some tentative commitments for the first, probably about 140,000 square feet and a couple restaurants right now, so just with that in place, the TDD would be funding about a million dollars a year in which the city and county would be totally reimbursed for helping out the initial funding of the extension of Mission Drive. I think you all are, the different commission that was here before, they, they were in agreement with the city for, I think it was about $2 million for that project that started off, in which I don't think ever got funded or built, obviously, so.
So basically, what you want is for us to fund, to help fund this after, after this is built?
No, the, the, we're asking for the initial TDD to be funded by the city and the county in the amount of $800,000 a piece, which would be the front section at 179 to that...
To the green property.
Yes.
Built green part property.
That's correct. Because we've got about a million cubic yards of rock to move on that site, and it's quite a project. But what we'd be doing with all that material is pushing it downhill to make that connection, to build that roadway all the way through, so, plus dedicating all that right of way.
So you're talking 800,000 from the city and 800,000 from the county, or 800,000?
Each, yes. That'd be the maximum for city and county, and you'd obviously be reimbursed 100% out of the TDD before anything else got paid for.
Questions?
Same place, no. It's here, Chris.
Jeff.
I saw it. I have had enough coffee. I have had enough coffee.
The city, the city's pretty much in agreement as long as county's on board to do this. I think they've got, uh, our support as well as your all's support to, uh, make this happen, so.
When did they do this before? I think they said it was $2 million for the TDD.
I think it was back when the hospital and Jerry Green had his development originally. He came in and I think there was an agreement that I saw that was signed by the, uh, other group that was in here prior to y'all, as well as different mayor within the city and MoDOT. It was, uh, an agreement between all three parties, and it was signed by the mayor, the county, commission, and MoDOT.
That's what I was thinking of. We had talked to Jerry about it. Did we sign the TDD then saying that we would front the money?
Go back and look.
Okay, I didn't refresh my memory on that too. I mean, there's a lot of questions on it before I'd say for sure one way or the other. I guess if it's guaranteed money, why doesn't the bank just loan you the money?
Well, we, we've got a lot of other expense with, with all the rock, plus all the land acquisition, and eventually, yes, we will be able to get the funding. Once the commercials in place and it's funding, yeah, we'll, we'll get a loan to finish up this shit drive all the way down, and that's why we're going to ask the county to continue Wildwood to get that built since you all already own all the right of way and it's already designed and engineered, so.
What was that project? Another $2.5 million? That was the thing, that was on, that was on the co-op project list at one point.
It started out as a county only project and the estimate was somewhere around $3 million. And then it's, um, one of the sales taxes, the city joined in and it made a cooperative project, so I'd say the estimates, it's still, it's a few years old, I'd say probably 3.5 billion, same size.
So it'd be $3.5 million and $800,000 here.
By the way, by two, the county did their 42 million just to cover. Okay, well, I appreciate you coming and talking to us. Um, I guess we want to probably talk about it, look at this and stuff, and then.
Go back and look.
Got to make sure your sales tax passes first.
Sure.
Yeah, where the money would come from, how long it would be to get it paid back. There's a lot of questions on it, but at least we got you up here on it, Chris. Sorry about that.
That's all right. I appreciate you guys hitting me up and, uh, you know, our projections, once the first phase that development's in, in the, the large box is in, we would anticipate two years reimbursing the city and county in full for their contribution on that.
Is the TDD just in that first section then, or would it extend through?
We will extend it all the way down and, uh, dedicate all that right of way, which is probably over $2 million worth of right of way, so, and no charge.
And that's all area's going to be annexed into the city too.
That's what we're proposing right now, yes.
So what, um, so by extending the TDD, what is, uh, the remainder? Is that going to be residential? I mean, is it going to generate us a tax or?
There, there's going to be some commercial down at the bottom where that connection's made to Wildwood, so there will be additional commercial down there, uh, as well as through that parkway, there may be some additional commercial, but there'll be retirement center, hotel with restaurants, uh, and additional uses through there, probably high-end residential and some multifamily, so.
So it would be something that generates some.
Are you talking to a hotel already?
Uh, we haven't locked anyone in yet, though.
Yep.
Thank you. I guess how soon do you need to know something?
Well, we'd like to, uh, yeah, today, but, uh, we, we'd like you to, uh, at least initiate maybe another meeting with the city to discuss this further and, uh, get it on the front burner. I mean, we're, we're going through all the approvals with the city, uh, every, uh, PNC's been unanimous so far, and council, uh, is in support of all this, uh, and they want to see the county be part of this like they were prior, so.
Sure.
Okay. Anything else, Jeff?
I'm just trying to remember where the city was at on this. How far along are they? Because I know the planning and zoning, they, they approved it, but that didn't have anything to do with the TDD, and that's going to be something totally separate. So y'all can do this with or without the TDD essentially, but it'd be a lot easier for you all, I guess, with it.
Sure, with, with the TDD, it guarantees the funding of that road. It'll make it a lot easier to finance the, uh, all, all that project, which will save the city and county probably four to $6 million.
So once, if we do say yes, and once we pull the trigger, then when? We don't actually start getting paid back until there's some taxes being collected, which could be two years from now.
That's correct.
And it could take how long to pay back? Would we be the first ones paid back?
Yes, the city and county equally would be paid back until payment falls, so you're probably right. There's probably a year worth of development, year in construction before they get open, so it'll be two years before money starts being paid back at the soonest, so.
So if you get started on it, then something happens, I don't know, it's hard to run into more rock than what y'all got over there that has to be moved, but if something happens, it goes belly up and you're done. What happens? Are we, is our loan insured, or do you have a, we have a performance bond? Would that be something you consider as having a performance bond, saying that if for some reason it doesn't come to fruition, we will be guaranteed our $800,000?
That's probably what we're saying there.
We did a letter of credit.
Yeah.
That's something that we can consider, but, uh, you know, with the TDD in place and having the, the road built and the, uh, project approved, uh, if for some reason we didn't do it, someone else would be in there to do that project, so.
Could be.
No guarantees, but.
That's why I'm not in the banking business. I might be a good lender at some.
But I mean, this is part of your all's master plan. This is part of the city's master plan. This is what you guys plan to relieve all the congestion and, and circulation throughout the city and county, so we're not asking to have something done that's not in your plan. I mean, it's something that.
That was on the plan, but I don't, I guess I struggle to see how it's an arterial road, but I see it more as economic development from my, my point of view. Do you remember, Eric, was that on the, it was identified, that road and then the Wildwood that, Wildwood was identified as a major thoroughfare study back, Larry, back in early 2000, I think.
Yeah, countywide.
Countywide, yeah.
It was identified in the countywide transportation study back in, like I said, it was in early 2000, Chris is still there.
I've been wrong before, I mean, like seven times yesterday.
Now, that was our understanding. It was part of the county's plan to have that built, uh.
Yeah, I know Wildwood was even on the, on the taxes.
Right, I believe on the tax ballots, uh, I think you all had to acquire all that right of way and design Wildwood, uh, before the taxes actually start funding, so.
Okay, I think that's all the questions I have for now, so, I don't know if we want to put it on the agenda again, or.
Probably should if you want to.
Talk to the cities too, where Mary, where the Mary's at. Try to stay on the same timeframe as them. I don't mind talking to some of them either. They may have more knowledge of what's going on with it too, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. You don't have to stay if you don't want to.
You're welcome. You wait and learn.
Don't feel bad about leaving.
Okay, bids and contracts.
The workers' comp.
Oh, sure. Renewal of workers' comp for next year.
Um, we currently are with MEM through the agency of Wall Street and Jennifer, and I invited them up here to answer any questions.
Oh, you invited them.
Well, I came to deliver good news. What's in your little package is the $2,000, gosh, this is the current year's, uh, rates, payroll versus the renewals for 2015, 16, and you can see all the rates went down this year. So that was very exciting. And inside the package also the mod analysis, I'm hoping they'll meet MEM, kind of explain a little bit. Chris had asked a couple of questions, uh, as to why the experience mod went up, which was very little, Chris was great, very small, it's based on losses.
In your package, there's a eight-page sheet. It's a mod master calculation. It's a program we have that forecasts about mods. We'll break down each claim showing how much it costs your mod, how much it costs your premium, et cetera. It also has, I think, the second, third page, mirror your NCCI report, which is your National Council on Compensation Insurance, which generates your E-mod. I think E-mod, current policy period's 2.84, it's going up next year to 2.86. The reason for the small increase is the losses come, the losses in the 14 policy period were a little bit higher than the policy period to 2010, that's fallen off. And the E-mod is based on a three-year picture, so not a lot of difference, but enough to build E-mod up a little bit, so. And again, two points is not a whole lot, if it just be one small, medium-sized claim, $10,000 claim, you move your mod a couple of points, so. Again, and from the insurance standpoint, uh, going from 2.84 to 2.86 is not alarming. If you jumped up 20 points, I'd say it would be a little more alarming, so. Uh, I know Chris talks about the expected loss rate. On there, you can see, let's just turn to the second page, there's columns up here that says codes, DLR, D ratio, payroll.
Yeah.
The expected loss rate you have there for like 5506, which is your road bridge classification your employees, is $2.82 per 100 payroll. And you have a total payroll of 1.3 million, 700,000. Uh, so when you look at that, you can just basically take your payroll, divide it by 100, take it times your expected loss rate, that's 2.82, and that gives you expected losses. What NCCI says should be average. And if you look throughout the year, you guys are always having losses less than expected losses. It's confusing, it's. I'd like to meet with you guys later, some other time, volunteer people, Debbie. Uh, but basically the way you look at the E-mod, you, you've got to credit E-mod, so you're doing better than industry average, and that's because your losses are always coming in lower than expected for your payroll and your class code. And it, you can get into a pretty complicated formula trying to figure it all out, so it has to bring in, load out for skills that are limited. Uh, so when you're looking at that, you know, from an insurance carrier standpoint, you guys are highly desirable for somebody who wants to ride them, because you historically have a very good loss ratio. I think overall with MEM, since you've been with us, loss ratio is running around 42% to 45%. So, keep doing what you're doing. Uh, I know Debbie does a really good job with bringing claims by duty, which has a big impact on your E-mod, bringing people in, not having lost time, so. Kudos to Debbie for that. And then if you want to switch to page seven, on this, it kind of breaks down, it kind of compares it to your industry, and it just shows you where your premium's at, what your expected loss rates are, where you fall compared to other industries with your classical periscopium counties and cities, municipalities, essentially. So based on this, the average company with your payroll should have had 518,000 losses over a three-year period. Uh, I think you all came in at 364,000, which is about 51% of expected. So comparing yourself to others in your bulk, you're doing far better than they are.
Keep everybody healthy.
MEM does a great job. They're really good with their claims. I do them online and they're very, very easy to get ahold of, the nurses are, if you have issues with employees, and they talk to the employees really well. Uh, they're very good at safety. They're always having classes, they're always giving us, um, little ideas about how to protect employees, so they do a good job of that.
We can come out and do more training. I, I just kind of work with Debbie and see something, we come out and take care of it going on. I don't see any trends in your losses. Uh, there's not anything that sticks out from, is it one department more than the other? Last couple of years have been pretty well across the board. Uh, you don't have a high claim frequency, so it's, there's nothing that from my, my standpoint of safety and insurance that are alarm, is alarming to me. I think we've got a couple, the biggest claims by accident, fall accident on ice, uh, so, but there's, there's nothing there that indicates a trend that safety is being, is a problem, if that makes sense.
I'd like to just go ahead and review with MEM for 2016, and that was, they had a couple years ago.
I'm good with it. I mean, I think MEM does a good job, uh, as long as, as long as I've been in business, work comp is the most confusing thing I've ever had to deal with, so.
I mistrust it.
Well, no. But, you know, the more, the more questions I've asked, the more I've been able to understand it, so anyways, uh, so anyway, you know, uh, you don't have to tell, do it today, Dale, but, uh, you know, maybe if you could just give me a brief explanation of page two, I mean, I'm kind of a numbers, probability, all that kind of person.
Yeah, I can sit down with you. There's a lot of information on this before, it breaks each claim down by mod cost, and I can show you, there's some things that I know I spoke to Debbie about, but I'd be more than happy to break it down and show you the formula, say here's what it is, and here I've figured it. And then you'll scratch your head to hope.
Well, probably most people would, but I'm a math major, so.
I don't think they had some of that, but it had people's names on it, so.
Yeah, right. That's fine, so. I know that we approved, uh, Wall Street to handle our work comp.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks for coming up.
Guys, if they have questions, just give us a call, any of us.
We will. Paperless, Jennifer.
Oh, I email.
Play the trees.
Okay, bids and contracts.
Okay, uh, I'm going to actually kind of do the first two together. First is the contract for Cummins Mid-South. That was the number 2015-42 that you awarded a week or two ago. Um, the first one's just the maintenance contract. In hand with that is the transfer switch replacement, which is the second one. It's based off of the rates, terms and conditions of the first contract and just involves the replacement of the transfer switch for the courthouse. So here's the maintenance, and then here's the transfer switch replacement.
We already award these.
Yeah, the Cummins Mid-South was 2015-42 that you awarded a week or two ago. And then the second is basically a piggyback off of the maintenance. We had a rate and then, you know, parts discount, et cetera, so.
If I move that we award the generator maintenance contract to Cummins Mid-South, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
We actually already awarded that, we just need to approve the contract itself.
Is that what I said or not? Probably not.
Okay.
No, I said one. All right, that we sign the transfer switch replacement with Cummins Mid-South, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Signing of addendum to contract on 2015.
We already awarded these, sir?
Yes, the Cummins Mid-South was 2015-42 that you awarded a week or two ago. And then the second is basically a piggyback off of the maintenance. We had a rate, and then, you know, parts discount, et cetera. So.
I move that we award the generator maintenance contract to Cummins Mid-South.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
We actually already awarded that, we just need to approve the contract itself.
Is that what I said or not? Probably not.
Okay.
No, I still want. I move that we sign the transfer switch replacement with Cummins Mid-South.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Signing of addendum to contract on 2015-35 map service, Aramark.
Basically, whenever Aramark signed this, the guy signed it before, their legal counsel looked at it, they had a concern about one of the clauses, which they looked over it.
Do it.
Well, it's not a big deal. Anyway, that's all this is. I have the original, if you care to read it, but.
I move that we sign the addendum to the contract with Aramark.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good award and contract signing of 2015-40 telephone and internet services.
You guys should have the, they should have the attachment in front of you. You can kind of field any questions you have, but it's pretty cut and dry. The total monthly cost for socket is going to be around $7,081 century link. Who currently have is $5,190. The recommendation is to award a century link.
Is this just a one-year deal, or is there a renewal?
This is three-year.
And increase per year?
There's no increase. If there's any increase, so.
So it's a three-year contract?
It's a three-year contract.
Now, there's always taxes and always other things that are attached to the bill.
He's going to find it.
Yeah, that's what that comes down to.
You have to be careful, love, to get into this. I mean, we're signing some rates, rates into the contract here that we can't like touch those unless we sign the contract, so.
You mean the audits don't come up, you don't read in the math or the street?
Well, I was going to say we've got long distance and all the low rates. I guess it's part of the contract.
Which is really nice, the way that Jennifer did this this time, and the way the company's fit in, is our long-distance service will actually be the first $10,000. So we're actually going to save a lot more with century link with this contract that's out. Currently, we pay for every minute we use, and so I think the long distance will totally be free. So it's a win-win for us.
Why do we have long distance? I don't have long distance.
Well, there's lots of people that have to go long distance to get to a company, to call people back, anything like that. We keep track of it by department, and if somebody's supposed to be.
I've turned to long distance for all.
Any personal calls, they're supposed to be refunded.
I got a cell phone, I don't have long distance.
Our county-wise, usually $300 to $400 in long distance.
I need a hundred free, Larry. It's not much to use on a nine hundred. You've got so many of the hundreds, I don't have a nine hundred. Start checking his cell phone bill. I know it's a free, but I want to make sure it's county-related. Of course it is, for health.
And there are a lot of employees that will use their personal cell phone if they have to make long distance. So it's pretty nice.
What were we talking about?
We just want you to approve that.
I move that we award and sign the contract with Century Wing for telephone and internet services.
Second.
You could sign the initial.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we're saving money, which is, yeah, but I still don't like the long distance. I only like having that plan.
Well, we really don't have that many. We're on PRI system, so it's local line.
I've got one in my office that I don't have to be using.
It's on PRI, so it's really not that expensive.
Not that expensive.
Okay, medical supplies.
Okay, medical supplies.
We actually do that once a next week.
We're going to, okay. For the next week. Signing of contract with Wilson Group, 2015-33 courthouse and annex window replacement.
Yeah, of course, you guys already awarded this one. Commence work by March 1st and complete by October 31st.
We're not doing the open windows, are we? Are we doing ones that are open? We aren't doing that.
Yeah, there wasn't an extra.
That was included in theirs.
Okay, so it would have been less, I guess.
Correct. Before you guys award that bid, I want to make sure the money's in the budget to encumber. So basically, we'd be using the receivership money and zeroing it out, plus transferring $278,355 out of contingency of general, putting it into the receivership, and then putting this purchase order out of the receivership to pay. So technically, no sales tax money will be used for this project. Make sure you guys approve that. I mean, definitely.
Once you just transfer receivership in the general fund, that'd be bad.
It is.
But you're taking the other money going receivership to the general fund.
No, I'm taking it out of contingency, just in account within general fund, and putting it into the receivership. So all the bills will be paid out. And the auditor.
I love government.
So, so March 1st to October 1st?
October, what was it, 31st? I thought it was.
Yeah, October 31st.
He acted by, that was just covering them, and that he anticipated being done a lot sooner, but that is what is in the contract.
Six months.
And we're still going to have to kind of work with the courts. Judge Beatham's pointed out to me, he's got trials and things like that, so we're going to have to, we're going to have to kind of work around the court.
Do they want a new window or not? They're going to have to work around this.
We're going to have to work together, so.
Oh, yeah, you're going to be that way today, huh? We'll work with people.
Yeah. I gotta work with you.
Didn't Judge say they're paying for this? We didn't have to take anything out of general.
Well, there's still potentially grant money that would be available, and maybe even some court money.
Yes, of course.
I've not approached them, I didn't.
If you're nice and we work with them.
I'm not the nice one. I'm going to take it.
Is there liquidated damages in there?
What if they do?
Do we want, do you want to firm up the money from the courts first, if we've signed?
We got to. I think if they put money in, it's just a.
Just found money.
Or it's just something that's going on.
Or if you just sign it, if you just sign it, you don't really have to prove it as a motion.
In this, we already.
You're awarded the bid, now you just have to.
So now I've got to vote to sign the contract. I'll make a motion to re-sign the contract with Wilson Group for the courthouse and annex window replacement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Maybe once that project starts, you guys can get a report from them or somebody on a going basis when bills come in, whoever you want to, whoever you want to forge. Because this is a pretty major project for us.
It is.
We're making two.
But that vendor, and maybe somebody from the county to make sure, make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, make sure they're complying with the contract, make sure that, I don't know, putting the windows in right, I don't know.
Well, I'm not paying them going out. I'm not paying them up front.
No, but as payments go, I just need somebody to tell me it's okay to pay.
Correct.
Once we have some of them go in, maybe we have the manufacturer rep come in and just verify that they're doing it per manufacturer's.
Already been discussed.
I like the jail.
That's where I'll, we did have them come in and look at the jail.
Because if they don't do it per manufacturer's recommendations, then we'll all warranty for it, right?
Pretty well.
Thank you.
Okay, approval and signing of contract with Professional Engineering Services for Parkview Meadows NID project.
Okay, we've got the, should have in here, digital packet, a copy of the contract on that. That's for the engineering work to do, the NID project at Parkview Meadows. Couple of things on that. Most of it's doing the analysis of the concrete and then picking the spots to replace, coming up with plans for that. But there is a part in there for televising storm sewers to find any deficiencies there. That's $500,000. What we find in there, there's some assumptions on, you know, what might have to be designed to replace, but if we get into something totally un, like $500,000, and it's estimated, it's not going to have to be that much. That's just a question for that.
You got $5,000.
Or, I'm sorry, did I say 500?
Yeah. Larry's.
Is the internet up there?
Yeah, I was going to say that blows the whole budget.
I'm going to grab some more coffee.
When you sit and look at these numbers all day.
Irish coffee.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing, Larry.
That did sound right.
That's an expensive.
$5,000 storm sewer inspection with the cameras. And what we find in that could require some additional engineering work. We may come back to you with supplemental agreement. The amount of this engineering contract is $22,055, and we would recommend a renewal of that. It is on a fast track to be done and completed, ready to bid out by February.
What are, is our plan to just replace sections of it currently? Homeowners are aware of that.
Right.
I just don't want them to think that they're getting all brand-new streets, so.
We went through, that's where Larry, Eric, and myself went out there and actually walked all the streets. And that's how we came up with this original process for the sections that we felt had to come out. Some of them were partial panel removals, others complete, so. This is where to protect our backs out, too. We're going to get them better and fix some stuff, but this way, when we take it over, then we know that it is up to par.
We've told the people all the way up along in working with, trying to form this idea that, you know, we had the camera, the stormwater, the cost that we had is very similar to what the CNPS was proposing, so. My question, can we sign this, or do we need to wait until the funding's in place? Wouldn't, I think, next?
You mean for the NID?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know, I'm not dealing with it.
So what are they doing to work?
Well, that's the question.
Because if we do this work and they find more stuff.
If you sign that, you're binding yourself.
Right.
So if you don't know that you have the money.
Let's cancel the contract if something falls through.
Instead of being able to sign the contract, we're going to have to have the money obligated in some way.
Well, and it's all about the short-term loan that we're going to have with the vendor. We already got the bid from the bank. We know which bank we're going to. It's a matter of now if we have the contract.
That's where this money would come from. So what if they find more stuff wrong with it, and it's going to cost a lot more than what they projected, which I think you were really, I don't know, either conservative or liberal, I don't know, looking at it and guessing what it's going to cost them. But if they say, well, hell, we don't want to put that much into it, and it falls apart, then.
I think we would have to pay back the short-term loan that we backed out of that down, is the way I understood it.
I'm not saying we back out. I mean, we're going to back out of them, there'd be one, but.
Or if they back out.
Anything stupid happens with it, then we could be stuck with $22,500 for the engineering But we got the bank on it already.
We have, we've awarded it to them, that you guys have. I don't have the actual money in the bank.
We don't have any signed documents yet, so I would wait.
Wait to sign that, or this.
Right. Wait to sign that until you sign the one.
That's why I brought it up, my list of $22,500.
Is that going to hold you up this first timeline?
We were just instructed by Tony to have it ready whenever we sign the papers with the bank. They were told last best, but I heard hopefully next week.
I would say.
It's not the same day.
Yeah, you can sign it on the same day, but next week, I think, wait to sign that contract.
Would the engineering company start working on this? Not this week.
Not this week.
I think we're okay if we wait. I just don't want to wait too long, because we need to go to wait on this.
I just remember Tony and Joy saying that we needed to wait to sign or obligate this until the funding was in place, that's, you know.
Okay, I will contact him today.
Yeah, let's put it on next week's agenda.
Thanksgiving is beginning.
It is, yeah.
We have another.
What we didn't notice, would it be better to wait or can we?
We moved it.
Can we enable it?
Or it's engine to.
We just wouldn't give a noise until.
I can sign the contract.
Once we get the contract signed for the bank, money, y'all are good to go. If y'all want to start working before that, that's on you all. That's the way I would see it.
Just tell Mike to go ahead and do it.
Same thing.
Mike, Mike's everybody, right? Don't come up to my office, we'll sip a little whiskey, we'll work it out.
Just go work.
You can invite me when we get back.
Approval and signing of release of storm water drainage easement on Gateway Drive.
Get everybody some coffee?
You're up, Ian.
We have court orders for three, you know, which one? Gateway.
Oh, I'm fine, we'll be fine for a minute.
Just that area that we have some pipe to.
The drawing in front of you on the, you should have PDF of that. When we did the remainder, the discussion with the habitat, remanatee for the house on Gateway, they had to redesign some storm water. And with that came a new storm water easement, which they have signed, we have not recorded it yet. We were going to do it at the same time. We released the old storm water easement, and we have a document that you all have to sign, just basically releasing the original storm water easement. And we'll record that document at the same time we record the new storm water easement.
We just moved in order to get a house built in that.
All right. This is really formal, too. Samuel Ambushman, Jeffrey J. Helscher, Christopher K. Shetland.
I move that we approve and sign the storm water drainage easement release.
All in favor?
Aye.
Accounts payable reviewed.
There are about three or four utility bills out there that we'd like paid, and Chris, also you're paying us about there, and it was just last week, so ask for approval of accounts paid.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I think, here, Jeffrey, sign here.
All right, Samuel.
Okay, we did the renewal work.
So we got subdivision street acceptance. There's three different streets that we'd like to accept with the county system. One, period, stores with early. They are Paradigm Drive, Alvin Avenue. This one's kind of unique, it changed ownership, and so there's actually two separate plants that it's on, that is actually the same road. It's in Paradigm subdivision section one, and then down here, Estates section four. Two different developers on that, Scott Schaper-Cutter and Richard Klosterman. And also County Park Place off of County Park Drive, or County Park Road. Fisher Estates, section two, and that's Kurt Fisher's the developer on that. These were all built in compliance with county standard plans and specifications, and they are complete. And so this year, or next year, for one-year period, we'll class now, do another inspection, make sure there's no deficiency at that time, and then accept it for them.
I move that we accept the streets as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And one year, session, closing session, we need a motion to fill in the closing session.
Is there anything else we need to do before we do that?
The only old business I had still lingering was this trash service out of the health department. What did we decide we were going to do?
We're just throwing stuff in the trash.
I'm going to give that back to you.
I asked you money.
No, I need to clean this.
Yes, I did, Christopher.
That's all. Anything else?
We got to sign all three of these.
Oh, excuse me.
I'm passing back. I move that we go into closed session pursuant to 610.021, sub three for personnel.
Second. Roll call?
I am.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Sign. Three.